It is 12:00 PM and I will call to order the December 1, 2020, MISD Board of Trustees Workshop. First item in the agenda is Public Comment, and I'm informed that no one has signed up to address the board today. So we'll move right into our second and final agenda item, which is Lone Star Governance Board Goals Workshop. And call on Dr. Dixon.
Thank you, sir. Um, thank you. Sorry, we had to have another meeting for this, but we are going to get this done. Pardon?
It was our fault.
Oh, well, no, your questions were good and they refocused us. Um, it, we actually made some decisions based on your questions because you were right. Um, the first thing is, in your packet is Goal One. My wingman over here, Jill, will talk to you about the statistics. I'm going to give an overview. She will go through the statistics. We will wrap up then with your conclusions or your accepting of our recommendations. Um, Goal One is one that we didn't talk very much about last time. The biggest obstacle has been the COVID slide. That's the answer to most of your questions last time. Uh, the COVID slide took us down 19% are from, I did my little math, but 75% is what we ended in 19. Our beginning of year, uh, our BOY is 56. So when we took that 19% slide is the reason that our 21 goal had to go to 66. We took too much of a slide there. Um, we're hoping that we can recover some of it, but we didn't want to have goals of dread, but we also don't want to have goals of defeat. So we've looked at that. We've adjusted that. Jill will answer those. Going to Goal Two, which was our primary focus at our last discussion, we have realized, remember when y'all were talking about the 25% and the 29% and yada, yada, yada? The reason that we would have a 44% target, but then the 29% up in the goal was because merging math and reading together, you could have had a 70% in both of those, but get no credit if the kid passed the reading and failed the math. So we have separated the goals. And so now the 44% is replacing that 29%, and you get the alignment y'all kept asking about. The goal will align then with House Bill Three. Um, the splitting these, uh, we were hurting our, by splitting them, we'll be able to gain credit for where we do have success. Whereas before, we were penalized if we had success in one area and failed in another, we failed totally. Um, we will be aligned with HB Three, with the Lone Star Govern- uh, Governance. Uh, Grade Three, Jill is going to talk about a little. That had to be separated out to, to do the meets. And now that we have a definition, Elise gave us the definition last time of the meets, that the student will be able to reasonably be successful in the next grade. Um, it will also give us an opportunity to get distinctions, which we, we cut ourselves out of. It seems like our prior goals, even though they were great, they worked against us in some cases. Um, you also charged us with writing a constraint three. Um, I was a little too aggressive in that, and I don't think we needed three because you already have it. You have it in your board policy. You already have a goal that a student may not be promoted in fifth and eighth. Um, that's BIE. What we need to follow is no social promotion. Stopping grade inflation. When a parent comes up to you and says, "How can you retain my kid when they've been on the AV Honor Roll all year?" You know, but they're not passing the assessments. We've got to get the rigor in the classroom to match the evaluations. And then, when the student is required to be, that is not successful, cannot be, is not going to be suc- successful, he should not be promoted. Now, we have to provide the intervention, though. We have failed with the student when that happens, and that-
Can I ask you a question, Dr. Dixon?
Sir?
I understand the premise of that. You're on the AV Honor Roll. The kid doesn't pass the assessment. That's confusing for mom and dad. But this semester, they're not doing end of year, they're not doing end of semester assessments. They're using the average of the, um, the, the first, second, and third six weeks. So wouldn't-
Are you talking about local assessment?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking about effort for the, how we're gonna-
Yeah.
Do the final exam and take the three?
Correct. Yes.
But that's still a measurement of proficiency, no matter how we do it. If we do it three, six weeks, if they passed, they passed.
Okay.
Here, there is a little caveat that the kid who doesn't do well in testing. Now, the state provides exceptions, but what we're not going to do, and we're not going to have a 16-year-old in second grade, y'all. You just don't need to worry about that. That even though we have 16-year-olds reading on the second grade level, what we need to do is provide programs. And I think one of the ways is going to be our redesign of Coleman. Coleman needs to have more optional programs that meet these needs. Uh, I've seen programs where the student doesn't pass. They go to an area, it actually happened to be in a mall, uh, where we had a school, and the kid would go there. Once he became proficient, it didn't matter if it was in October. He could go to the high school. Once he mastered, it is a huge motivation. Right now, our kids, and I sent this to you, it's from our records, there's some other data, but in 2019, 457 kids failed either the math, the reading, or both of the STAR test, and we didn't promote one, uh, we didn't retain one single child. We didn't retain one. So, um, well, but, you know, my wife. But what we have to do, we can't just stop there and retain the child. We then will have to have the segues. This one thing I've been charged with already is to look at the new calendar. And I think that's going to be our biggest opportunity. Increase instructional days. Have the three, have a one, two, and three intercession plan. Have the first intercession in October. One week, five hours a day. If that parent doesn't let the kid go, then that parent's going to have to agree to retain him the end of the year. We'll have a second one in the spring. It'll be one week, five hours intensive instruction. So that'll be the second, and then we'll have a 20, maybe only 15 days. I haven't been able to get it to work out yet. But at least 20 more days at the end, that student will almost have had 50% more direct instruction in reading than they did the whole year. Um, we'll have to find, we did, um, Jeff jumped in and said, "We can't even find summer school teachers." Um, that will be the challenge for us. It should be teachers that we invite to teach this with a lucrative compensation, and I will look for private support of that to help increase that compensation so that people are begging to teach. Um-
Dr. Dixon, how, how s- uh, how soon do you think you'll be able to-
January.
Propose a calendar for the, okay. All right, great.
Because we need to get it out to the parents because you actually have a board policy um, that says that we will notify the parents of what are the requirements for them to pass the class. So not only with this calendar. Now, we won't have those interventions this year because we missed the window to have the 30-plus funded by the state. Uh, but we will have the calendar ready. If they're going to go skiing in October and they choose not to have the intervention, the success of their child will be borne by them along with us as a partner. So we will have the opportunities there to pull them up. We'll try to early, early intervention and early identification. I mean, these kids are going to be recommended for this program in October, so if they're already behind. Um, so with this, I would like Jill to go ahead and show you, uh, the alignment. We've seen the charts before. I think they just make a little more sense now of the goal, and we'll go from there. Yes, sir?
The redesign.
We will absolutely have to have, I, it will be additional because the enrollment will grow up. It will be different also. We might have a first-grade reading teacher at Coleman Hospital. Because if that's what we need, we need a reading teachers for those types of programs. So the staffing will look different along with the talks.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Davis, um, fellow trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you today and, um, really kind of work through what I missed at the last workshop. So apologies, um, but thank you for understanding. I did, and I appreciate y'all understanding that. Um, getting my husband home is really, lots to be thankful for, um, this time of year. So let's go ahead and dive into the work. And, uh, what I want to do is kind of, if you'll have your hand out side by side, I'd like to go through the PowerPoint along with, um, this kind of what I'm just going to refer to as a worksheet. So you'll have your PowerPoint on one side, your worksheet on the other, because I feel like if we talk both documents together, we'll have a much better understanding of kind of where we are and what we're recommending, um, to the board to take to the community. So when we look at Goal One, another thing, um, that, that we did do, and I appreciate Dr. Dixon coming to the board and asking for this, we also decided to scale back rather than having five-year targets, going back to three-year targets. So you'll see throughout this document, um, with all the things that are coming and, and as far as changes in assessment, new superintendent onboard, et cetera, I, I appreciate the board allowing these three-year targets rather than stretching all the way to five and really locking that in, um, when we might need to reevaluate after, after we get more data sets, um, this fall. Right now, in Lone Star Governance, it's three to five years. Initially, we were three years. The second round of training y'all got, I think they encouraged five, but since they allow three to five, um, I like the recommendation of us starting with three and then, then branching out. So you're going to see a few, um, from, and remember, our from date is going to be our 2019 data, two, which is going to be our 2023 targets. So when you look at Goal One, we're still looking at our K2 reading kids. And, uh, the Goal One is really measuring where our kids will be at the end of second grade. So looking through this, um, for 2021, 66%, 2022, 70%, 2023, 76%. And so I want you to, um, I want, I want to go through this. This slide was also in the, in the last presentation. It gives a good vertical representation of where each grade level should be in each year. But I want you to kind of understand a little bit of the method behind why we set the goals where we set them. And I feel like this new chart, um, really helps explain that. What we want to do is look at where our Kinder Kids are going to start this year in 2021. And we want our Kinder Kids to be at 65%. Then how much do we want our Kinder Kids to grow as first graders? And we've set that as four more percentage points. And then how do we want them to perform as second graders, which our current Kinder Kids will be second graders in 2023? We want them to be at, at 76%. When you look at our kindergartners that are starting in 2022, um, we want them to start at 67%. Again, using that same methodology, want, we want them to grow four percentage points as first graders, so get them to 71. And because we're not setting targets that far out, if you went with the same kind of, um, formula, you would add seven to that, and then our second graders would be at 78. So, but, but because we're not setting targets for 24 and 25, that's quite simply why it says to be determined there, because we're not quite ready to do that. Um, now going to the worksheet page, though, I think it's really important to go to this worksheet and look through in case there are any questions or, um, get a better understanding of where we are in Goal One. So what you've got on the right side column, still, I wanted to leave all that historical data there, just so you have a reference. But know that once these are approved, that historical data will come out, and then that will be replaced with when we actually report it in the board reporting calendar. It's just there for space-saving purposes so that you have the historical data. So looking through GPM 1.1 is pre-K. We've, we've, we've discussed, and I really saw it around that. 1.2 is our kindergarten kids. So showing this chart of where our Kinder Kids are, you can see the progression of that group of Kinder Kids as they grow. And then those are then plugged into the first grade targets and the second grade targets, so that we want to end, end 2023 with our second graders, at least 76% of our second graders at or above, um, reading level as second graders. 1.2 breaks down Kinder, 1.3 breaks down first grade, and of course, those are both progress measures to get to the ultimate goal of our second graders. Yes, sir?
The November, I see that the numbers went up. I'm glad to see they went up. Can you elaborate on why they went up? And what they were proposed before? For example, as I understand, if I was reading November correctly, GPM 1.2, 2021 was 62, now it's 65. 22 was 64, now it's 67. And 23 was 68, now it's 69, which I'm glad to see the increase. I was just wondering why the change or what the elaboration was.
Really, the best description I can give of the change is how we expected our current Kinder Kids to do this year, and then projecting them out. We want them to grow four, and then we want them to grow seven. So when you go back and you apply that, I think that that's, that's, that's the methodology there. What's a real, um, what gives us anxiety as well as where we're, where we're giving our best, um, effort at setting a target, quite frankly, is this school year. And so what I, what we did is look at where we are beginning of year of this current school year, looking at historical performance from beginning of year to end of year, and then tried to make the best percentage of where we expect to be at the, at the end of 2021, for example.
But I guess my question is, what, what, what happened since November 17th that caused these numbers to go up from what they were proposed on November 17th?
So when you look at 1.2 at Kinder, it was 62, and now we're at 65.
Right.
I think Kinder is our best class that has honestly suffered the least from COVID. So of all the grade levels in district right now, Kinder Kids are the most normal that we will have ever experienced. So we feel like Kinder, because they, they weren't impacted by COVID. No.
Sliding.
They're initially starting school.
And when they started school, they started.
They started. So we feel like that if we, if we can get Kinder at 65 this year, we felt like 62 was too low. Quite frankly, going through and really listening, um, to the, to the dialogue last meeting, talking to the task force, of all the grade levels that should, should perform at, about where all of our other years Kinder has performed, Kinder is the grade. Then if we can set Kinder, then we felt like we could use that methodology to add four and then add seven. So that's, that's the theory behind, um, where we were there.
So the, the question I have, uh, so the, the 2021, the 65% is talking about the kindergartners we have right now as we speak?
Yes, sir. In beginning of year, they were 49%.
And so they went from 49% at the beginning of the year to 65 now?
That's where we want them to be at the end of this year. Yes. And in November, they were already 53. We know in Kinder, they make this huge growth between January and April.
So from November to now, we're getting more data every minute, right? That's what's happening. And you can see that the longer, and you can see this over time, the longer our students stay with us, the better they are. And having our, our Kinder students face-to-face, great teaching and learning, and a focus on literacy, we can see that those scores, that progress monitoring is taking a nice upward trend. So it's, it's a, just a little bit more confidence than where we were at the beginning of the year.
So we feel that confidence going from 53% to 65% at the end of the school year.
We feel, again, that's our goal. This is stretch goal.
And the reason why I say that, Mr. Bishop, is quite frankly how our Kinder has performed in prior years. So if you look at 18, we were 41% at beginning of year, and they ended at 66. It's about 25 points, percentage points, from beginning Kinder to end of Kinder. So looking at that, we really feel like if we were 49% at beginning of year, this might not be the year that we make 25 points, but it could be a year where we still get a lot of growth in Kinder, because Kinder is Kinder.
I mean, I, I, I'm not asking to set the bar low, but I do want to make sure it's attainable and that we don't, uh, we don't bury ourselves based on 65%. And then for whatever reason we have, with the COVID, anything else could happen. Who was this back? And I know we said it doesn't really impact our, our Kinders as, as much as it did the grades before it. But I just don't want us to get to the end of the year, and, and I'm not speaking on a negative, I mean, just to be positive there. I mean, I know we might show progress, but I also want us to, want it to be a smart goal and also be attainable.
Yes, sir, and I understand that. And I feel like that's the beauty of the workshop setting, is that what we're recommending, if that's not what the board, um, wants to see there, then this is the opportunity to really get on the same page and decide before, you know, before it goes forward to the public or especially before you approve in December. Did that help, Mr. Davis, a little bit?
Yeah, and, uh, is the, I have the same question for the differences in Goal Progress Measure 1.3. The doctor, Goodnow, answered that by saying, "We get, we've got even more data since y'all have even more data than you had on November 17th," and why the numbers went up there as well?
Again, if you look at the 2022 number going from 67 to 69, it's simply because of the methodology that's displayed on this slide. If Kinder can start at 65 this year, then as first graders, we need them to be at 69. So to me, it's the easy, it, it makes more sense to look at how a cohort of students tracks through rather than looking at maybe equitable growth vertically. Because we're looking at groups of students moving through the system, and we want that group of students to continue to grow. So knowing where they start helps us, um, helped us set those targets. If we had set it at 67, what we would be saying is our current Kinder students, we're only expecting you to grow two percentage points when you get to first grade. What we're saying is we want you to grow four percentage points when you get to first grade.
I guess another question, I mean, and I know you, you are looking at a lot of data. And I guess one of the questions to ask is how much input are y'all receiving, uh, from the principals on some of these goals that y'all bring before the board, if any?
So these, uh, we had a task force of principals with principals on it, and I think that was shared in the last workshop, um, where they have had input. And principals are, know that it's going to require, um, change to hit, to hit our numbers. And we know that that's the whole point of Lone Star Governance, is adult behaviors changing so student outcomes can improve. And then that translates to teachers. You know, once principals know and understand, then how do we coach and train teachers to ensure that those adult behaviors change to get the improvements that we need? Because if, if we keep staying status quo, it, it's the AIGL definition, how would we expect to, to improve? So that, that's, that's kind of where we are with Goal One. Good? Okay, let's move to Goal Two. Really excited about splitting Goal Two. Um, quite frankly, because we were not able to make a clear connection between the goal targets that were set for Goal Two when we had to be meets on both. Now that we've split it into reading and we've split it into math, um, I know that today we'll be able to articulate a little bit better just around Goal Two and what we're, what we're wanting to do there. Um, so Goal Two is talking about our students and performance in reading at the meets or masters level. In 2019, our third through eight students, um, on STAR scored 36% at the meets or masters level. And you'll see that we want to gain about 12 percentage points by August of 2023. So going from 36 to 48 is a 12 percentage point, um, jump. If you notice, our yearly target for 2021 is 44%. Um, that 44% is important because that's the number, that's the target that TEA sets in Domain Three for our all-students group to meet Domain Three targets. So we need 44% of our all-students to be, um, at the meets or masters level on STAR. So then it makes sense, as you get through the Goal Progress Measure, that if our end-of-year target is 44% at meets or masters, we would expect any of the assessments that we use during the school year to project out, to predict the goal, to also be at 44%. So I think aligning the number in the goal and the Goal Progress Me- Measure now, I hope is much, um, is clearer or, or is much easier to understand why that's important. When we also talk about Goal Two, though, I also wanted you to see the alignment with now the House Bill Three goals for our early literacy. Um, that is a piece that we talked about at the board meeting and asked to table. And when I really talked about alignment now, my hope is that you do see the alignment. Our third graders are where we measure early literacy in the STAR test, and we need them to be at 44% because we need third graders to also hit, uh, the Domain Three targets, just like we need all three through eight. So my, my hope now is this is a little better or a little bit easier to understand, um, when we look at Goal Two. Questions on Goal Two? I bet I can predict what you're going to ask, but I'll let you ask.
Go ahead, then.
Okay. Are, are you asking, um, why third grade targets might be a little bit different than the Goal Two targets?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the reason for that is our third graders actually outperformed our three-through-eight students as a, as a larger group. So what we don't want to do is stifle their growth or not expect them to continue to attain at, at the same level. So, um, you'll notice that the, that the House Bill Three goals are a little bit higher for third grade, where third through eighth, as a collective group of students, um, is not the same.
Okay.
The, you don't take STAR till third grade?
That's the first year.
Correct.
But Goal One is about K through two. So the standard-based assessment is purely a local decision. Do we have metrics in place to make sure that we're not throwing softballs to make sure that we hit our, I mean, is there an, is there a committee or a, you know, a-
Currently, we use ISIP, which is the assessment and Istation.
Yes.
Of course, and we're looking at kids that, um, score at levels three, four, or five, which used to be tiers. Now, now they're levels. And so a student that's it, that's in, scores in level three, four, or five, we consider on or above. When we look at level four, that's really where we're looking at meets, and level five, we're really looking at masters.
The data that shows those second graders that are hitting ISIP at four or five, historically, when they're taking the standardized state assessment, third grade or meets or masters.
Yes. Sure.
Year or two, this is the number that hit that.
Uh-huh.
And then it's the third grade.
It'll take us a little while, but, but yes, we can get that for you. Someone make a note of that for me. And these are just the targets listed vertically. Okay. Goal Three. Um, same methodology, same line of thinking, except in reading. Goal Three is about math. Um, you'll see the Domain Three target in math for all students is a little bit higher. It's actually 46% to meet that target. So you'll see on our math goals that we are, um, 2021, we want to be at 46%. Our last STAR scores in 2019 showed us at 39%. Um, still using that methodology, if we want to gain 12 percentage points by 2023, so our end of year, end- so our end of year, end of year two thousand twenty-three, we want fifty-one percent of our students in grades three through eight to be scoring at the meets or masters level on the STAR math test. So again, looking at the methodology in twenty-one, forty-six, forty-eight, and fifty-one.
What did you say, thirty-nine or something like that?
Two thousand nineteen was thirty-nine percent. So still tried to use that same methodology of growing twelve, just like we did in reading. It's just a different starting point from where we were in reading as we are in math.
How does that equate or how does that work for us? To go on those percentage points when, well, one is we didn't do the testing this year, we're not going to. But I guess my other question is if kids, if students have been out of the classroom from the period of time of March until we came back, how does that? We don't feel like that's going to have that great an impact on where the students are in their learning?
We do feel it will impact it. I also think the task force represents, it would also be irresponsible for us to set a goal that's not going to allow us to meet the target in Domain Three for accountability purposes. So forty-four in reading and forty-six in math is the lowest score that you can get in all students to get the points you need in Domain Three. That's, that's really the reason, because it's a large jump this year to go from where we were in nineteen to where we need to be in twenty-one. It is quite a jump, but if we set it lower than the bar that the state sets for us, I think that that's, I think that's a missed step.
I understand that as well, but the campuses that we have right now that are failing, and I know we have people that are going from central office down to assist, words that are going to put us in the coming school years as far as make sure we're following through, not only with the campuses that, that are failing, but also with the campuses that are even passing, to make sure that we have, the resources are there, that all the birds not attack on the teachers themselves and the campus-level principal, try to keep the ball rolling forward. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I'm not sure that I can answer that, quite frankly, because of where we are in responding to campus needs. We're responding as soon as they need something. And so when we respond to one need, it might put another campus out for a day or two until, you know, the next person can, can resolve what they're needing.
And that also is where our intervention calendar comes in. That's where the teacher tells us, I have five kids behind in October. Okay, then they're going to come twenty-five hours of reading during our intercession week. We're basically going to be a safety net for the teachers that when the failing kids surface, those are the kids we're going to target. We're not going to target the teacher. We're going to target the kids that need the additional intervention. And that's going to either, if these teachers will have an option to be on an extended contract or we're going to have to hire private people to come in and do that. This, the thirty additional days is going to be a separate contract from their teacher contract. So it may not be a teacher from their campus doing that intercession. We're going to be out there looking for the best people to do it. And it may be a retired teacher that is willing to work a week in the fall and the spring because those are going to be separate. I think Mr. Fuller had a question. Oh, I'm a mind reader, I just.
Psychic.
Okay, just like you.
Yes. And then just comparing this or looking at this in regards to House Bill Three, that same kind of methodology applies. Our third graders were outperforming the third-through-eighth group as a whole. So those targets are a little bit different, but now I do think you'll be able to see the alignment better with our early literacy, early numeracy being measured in third grade and also how that now aligns nicely with our Goal Two and our Goal Three for math and reading.
Everything that we're looking at right now with the supposition, if we can bring up reading, the other things will come up also because your math, a lot of your math is reading, you know, problems. You know, and so, but that doesn't exclude that in out-years, you may have to have the same type of academy built into the school year format. I just don't think we can cure the whole disease in one time.
And then the rest of this presentation is really built on Goal Four, which are high school goals, which we've been really settled around even since this summer. So I really don't think. No changes. And I think we were solid on those even back in July, to be quite honest. So I really want to take you kind of through the board monitoring calendar. The only changes that have made there, quite simply, are because some of our goal numbers changed by adding a goal. So you'll see some goal four-point-one, four-point-two, and that's just because we needed to renumber when we split out Goal Two into the new Goal Two and Three. Now we have four goals rather than just three. And then I'm happy to take other questions or any discussion or anything, anything else I can support or help with. And so that was going to be my next question. I'm not sure if the board is still wanting to take this to the public before adoption. If so, that's, of course, probably the next thing that needs to be discussed in this room is a public meeting. And then knowing that the board meeting is, I think, December fourteen.
He says you don't have to when you do the initial time, you set the open on the subsequent time. It's not mandatory.
Yeah.
But just taking it to the public, putting it on, you know, having Elena do press release and social media and some of that, is that efficient or is it? Most of our evidence that you have to do like a public meeting. Again, most of our government does not require a meeting at any time that you set three to five.
How do you think our public will take that, though, if we adopt it? Without at least plugging them in for public comment?
Yeah, there needs to be some dissemination to the public.
Yeah, that's what I agree with.
I'm all for, I am all for transmission. Putting them on our website, allowing for input. I haven't been too impressed with the level of participation in in-person meetings. I'd say that can do it. I'm fine with doing it. This is, I'm all for transmitting the information, press releases, website, and I'm open to whether, you know.
I'm very thrilled.
In person meetings, staff would like to see this adopted at the fourteenth. At minimum, we need to put it out virtually, public comment, and there be an interface for them to move on.
I think both virtually and in the newspaper.
Right.
You know, so everybody has a chance. And then we have, I'm sure that we can put a place on a website and comment.
Yeah, she's on.
I think, I think that's the way to do it. Because I would, I mean, when all the teachers are all mad, if we give four teachers to the deal? Three actually has been one old school board member.
And what we could actually put it out there for the public and to put that this will be adopted at the December fourteenth board meeting if any person's wished to comment.
Elena?
Nick, I think you can take off my PowerPoint, I think.
Yes, sir.
See, Nick.
How quick a turnaround could you work with Jill and disseminate this, boil it down to a one sheet for a press release for the paper and then do some social media and then have a, some sort of avenue for people to respond via either, you know, a post or a website or so we can say that we've had that, that availability for the public to engage?
Sure. I'm certain we can get something up by the very beginning of next week, if not the end of this week.
That gives time. That's what, that was my concern.
That'd be ten days.
We have to get this hint on the road. I'm sure the staff. Before we use words like willy-nilly, this is our second most star workshop is a public meeting. And all our meetings are videotaped to the core for the public view, so. We're not, we're not meeting the secret here today.
Last time is secret.
And in kind of summary, you should still state it.
Yes, ma'am.
I did not, I had never seen a comment like the superintendent shall not allow adult conceit conveniences or preferences to take priority for student academic progress. I think that's the most powerful statement I've ever seen a superintendent read handle. And I didn't even know it. I didn't, at least, actually, Mr. Davis had to read it and explain it to me in the last one. But the last two weeks reworking on this, when I looked back at the things that I see as flaws and how we got where we were, it's because of the adult conveniences we have allowed. We allow teachers to protest to not work another day for our kids. We have moved people around and kept them on staff and not let incompetence go. I think that constraint, if nothing else, should be bolded and handed to the new superintendent because that's how he's, she is going to be successful. I, I just think if you look at what has happened and you start, and maybe it's the fresh eyes from outside of the district that I'm like, why does this happen? And it's been because of the adult conveniences. You know, why have some departments ballooned? Where did these people come from? Why are we not on the campuses? Why? I think another one that won't be popular with the principals and teachers, we have to have a unified reading program. One reading program that everybody follows and that we train current teachers and new teachers and we support them and we give them the materials instead of doing twenty-five different reading programs. How can a central office support that? I mean, we fail up here because of, and y'all have used the word autonomy a lot. And I want a principal to feel like she's the king or queen of her campus.
That was going to be my question. There's a slippery slope there. How do we balance that unified, but still talk about empowerment and autonomy when we're telling them what they?
That's correct. Because the autonomy can't be an F. The economy, the autonomy can't be a D. So we have to put the bones and structure in place. And then, you know, it's the old, the art and science of teaching. Which is it? We tell them what to teach, but then we allow the personality of the teacher and that, but that's correct. And so I think there'll be a little pushback to this.
Can we, is there something added to prove that having a unified reading system will improve literacy outcomes?
I don't, I don't know. We could certainly look at school districts that are high-performing. Do they have a quote mandated reading program? Every, every district I've been in has.
That would be a way that we could, you know, couch to the principals. You're still autonomous, but look, we lack literacy and reading. And this is the way that successful people do it.
Correct. And like Lisa did, we're going to have an audit and we are comparing ourselves. We are not comparing ourselves to DNF districts. We're comparing ourselves in the audit to the ones that are up in the nineties. What? Yes. Why?
Six F.
Yeah.
Six F.
Eighty-nine to ninety, we're not even going below ninety.
Why, why, and we say this all the time. Why can't you look across the entire border of Texas with the lowest socioeconomic, highest minority, and they're all A districts? What are they doing? They're doing prescriptive, you know, curriculum. Well, just like a prescription, we're telling you how to treat your body. So I think that we're going to have screaming and yelling because our teachers currently teach a hundred and sixty-six days and they're going to teach a hundred and eighty. That is what an academic calendar is. Now, we will probably have to do some summer institutes and some things like that. We are definitely going to support our first-year teachers better. We will bring them in early. They'll come in. This, you guys used to do this. You used to bring your first-year teachers in a week before the regular teachers. But no, we don't do that. It's so.
Mr. Bailey?
I don't, oh, he is there. But anyway, but all of this is going to come out in this calendar we're going to propose. We'll have our literacy institutes up front. We'll have the support groups at the district office that, and probably in a different structure, I don't, you'll have a new superintendent. I don't know how that person will do it. But at least we'll have a roadmap for him and a calendar. And you're, I used to always say it's the budget that is your roadmap to success. In this case, I think it's going to be your calendar that's going to be your roadmap because it's going to open the doors for the interventions that you need, adding more staff to the campus level when needed during those. The central office are already on two thirty-six. I'm going to be so bold that some of those people teaching those intercessions might be central office people. You know, that might be who does actually those classrooms. Because we're going to look for the best. And I would hope the best is over here. And if we can't get them back into the classroom, the last two or three weeks have been this tremendous challenge with deploying our central office staff to go support the campuses. And they're back in those classrooms and they're, I haven't gone and solicited one single story from a single person and it had probably twenty people come talking about what they saw, what we need. This is what we need out there. This is what this, this is happening. You know, wake up.
I have two.
I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
So just to kind of back, put a little bit of a backbone to what you said about the reading program. I spoke to a principal, it's been about four weeks ago, and she specifically told me the reading program, the way we have it now, does not work because I can't get a teacher from a different school that has the basic reading program that everybody needs. And she said, let's get everybody the same reading program, trained and do it. And that's what the principal told me. So I don't think that may be a fault of autonomy. I think that's a part of allowing principals a little bit of tools right there to make things happen. That's not a reading program.
And ISIP, so we talk about iStation a lot, but ISIP is a testing tool within istation. That is the same, istation is kind of an intervention that we use. I'm not convinced that we're using it to, like, this full extent of, of a lot of what Lit is doing. I think what I, what we really need to look at is kind of that loose tight, right? Where are we tight and where are we loose? And defining that very clearly for principals, okay, what you're asking for. Where do I have room and where, where do I not have room? And that, that's what we need to get clear.
Okay. And then my, my other comment was, and you said this last time about the one sixty-six versus one eighty days. And I thought, and y'all can correct me, Jill, you may remember, but I thought Mr. Riddick added, and with the board's approval, time to the day so that we had the same minutes, but we cut out the teaching days. Because I remember being told specifically, that wasn't my call. That's superintendent's call and we're going to a seven forty-five start. We're adding the minutes to the day to have extra minutes. And so I just want to make sure we balance out.
The minutes and the days don't have to match. We have that seventy-five thousand six hundred or whatever minutes. That is just a minimum. Now, how you make your calendar is different. So you just have to make sure whatever your calendar is, you meet this minimum seventy-five. So seventy-five thousand, yeah, I got that. So I'm not convinced just lengthening a calendar. So I'm not convinced just lengthening a calendar did that. But what we lost was we have all these teacher planning days and PD days. If we go back to the one eighty and get the kids in school and get that structure, our two workdays, and then our five staff development days, and we'll add to the new teacher calendar. We can still do two hour early release for parent conferences. It will have more than enough minutes, but then we can back into it to build those things. Because I still believe in parent conferences. At the elementary level, I think we might even, if we do this intersection, intercession concept, I think every parent should have a conference before each intercession starts to offer it to a parent. You know, this one I'm requiring, I'm requiring that your student go to this. As a parent, you get to opt to send them or not. There might be some parents who want their children to go to it. Now, we'll have a priority for need, but you are right. Regrettably, I don't think it should have been said like that. But the one, one eighty-seven is what the teacher contract gives. Five and two is required by law. The seventy-five is required by law. How you design it then is up to you. And what we did, and, and actually when I spoke to Dr. Murray, you know, he, they had done the same thing. They had backed up to one sixty-nine. Now they're back to the one eighty. Now, one of the, the reasons for the one eighty is kind of a little secondary motive also. If you have a one eighty calendar, you can get funded for your thirty-plus days. And so we will get money from the state in doing the thirty-plus. And I'm not sure, I would like to do the five days with the two weeks off in the fall, one week of vacation days. So that these, these kids that are going to intensive remediation aren't punished with no vacation. You know, that's always been the concept of summer school. But we've got to get some skin in the game, you know, for the kids. And, and basically it's going to be your number four. You know, your parents, we need you to really have the kids here during this week. I think we will have some parents that would like to opt into it and the kids maybe not even that behind. But I would like the teachers to have individual parent conferences to give these options to the parents. So those will probably be built into this calendar as parent conferences.
When will we see a first draft?
Well, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, so if I have my desk right now. I'm not ready to quite bring it. I'm, I'm struggling.
But we did talk about bringing it earlier in the year than we have previously for these conferences.
She anticipates it will be voting on it in June.
I, I will, I will have something for you to vote on. What I, what I'm trying to avoid is the old pick and pay thing. Every time we give somebody choices, it's, you know, then it becomes controversial. And I'd like to bring forward a calendar. And like Mr. Bailey brought up something yesterday, that please don't back into July. Because then we have kids that are, you know, still in school that have, that were bringing on contract, that haven't even graduated yet. So that slid my thing this morning after talking, hearing that. And it might be, end up being five, five day intercession in the fall, five in the spring, and only a fifteen day summer instead of twenty. But I'll have all of that worked out. Because I would like a, a final document to bring to the board and then y'all tweet back. What, okay, we don't like this, we don't like that. I, I mean, I have one where I shortened Thanksgiving. Well, we, when I went back in historically, we'll have real low attendance on Monday and Tuesday. If I cut the Thanksgiving week to Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. There's just so.
People have gotten used to it.
Yeah. Well, and it's, and the thing is, is I just need to be draconian in this. It's going to be such a major change, just do it in one bite. Let's do it at Watts. Let's get our intervention calendar in, let's get back at a hundred and eighty. Let's get our literacy program in with a concrete. I'm not a reading specialist and someone's going to have to choose a program. Katie's a readings czar, she's a master reading teacher. Somebody's going to have to pick it with teacher input, what's the best one? It would be my recommendation to go back to a phonics based program. You know, get this in from the bottom. There's a lot of products out there, but we need to know in the spring to tell the teachers, especially our lower elementary. We're going to have a reading program, this is the support we're going to give you. We're going to have to identify, we're going to have to know who these people are. They're going to teach this week in the fall, the week in the spring, and the summer. We're going to have to find these people. I, I need to get out there on the stump with some of the corporate people around here that have offered their support.
Well, one of the things too, uh, two things, I guess to find these people that these teachers that you're talking about with their extras, I think if, I think if people kind of know what the, what the pay or what the compensation is going to be, I think people would be more opt to say, yeah, I want in on that versus waiting till they sign up and say, well, here's what you're going to be paid. And then, and then the second thing I guess I would ask, I think we've, we've asked and done in the past, is some of the things that we're talking about rolling out as far as calendars and stuff like that, is maybe letting our, our teachers and staff have a first look at that before it actually goes public. That way they're said or not, one of the, some of the last ones to know when they're actually at the frontline of people that's teaching.
That's our, our normal process is that, that it goes through DEIC, they represent their campus, there's some campus input. And, you know, whatever that process looks like this year, I know Dr. Dixon will ensure that, you know, there's, that, that's gone that direction.
While I scream and yell, there shall not allow any adult conveniences over academic instruction.
You know what, ma'am?
That I will not allow any adult convenience to take preference over academic process. Because there's going to be pushback, y'all. I mean, I, I tried to bring people back one day a week when they were already supposed to be teaching and got pushback. You can imagine the pushback I'm going to get on putting fourteen days back into the calendar. But let them beat me up. I got a rain check of my recovery for the next five or six months. But you gotta, if you don't do this, the nine is going to be twelve, the twelve is going to be fifteen. Those F campuses are just going to increase, increase, increase. And I'm hoping the LIT, the sixty-five tutors, we have a board, we have a board in Katie's office already, the principals have requested their tutors. They've identified where they need these people. I think that this is a little bit of predecessor to what we're going to be doing with our five day interventions. That we're going to send these tutors out. These are people that college students, I mean, can you imagine a college student who's virtual right now getting paid twenty-five dollars an hour? They think we've gifted them something. But that's what we want, you know, that's what we need. I don't know if we're hitting a lot of retiree cycle, are we Katie? I, I don't know if we've got some retiree people that are willing to come back in. We have exposure, but I am going to look at those retired people to come back. Because every one of you could tell me a great teacher that has retired that's living in this district. So we're going to go after them. The top of our salary schedule right now is seventy-five thousand dollars for a forty year experience. When I made my budget to look, when I wanted to look for my money, I'm going to try to do the daily rate of the top of our schedule for these people. So a first year teacher would be, when you talk about the money, when we go look for them, I will have a budget, what I won't know is how many kids. I just set a hundred. If I have to have a hundred teachers teach the, the intercession, it will be over one million dollars. And supplemental pay directly to them. So we're on it. Oh, well, I, I think we're going to, this won't be, I'm just picking this out of the air, but I can't imagine more than ten kids to a class. I, yes, we will.
There'll be a lot of hands on.
Yes. I, I'll tell you what I, how I kind of came up when I was doing my budgeting. If you have six grade levels, and I didn't put Kinder in there, I'm a proper student. If I said we needed one teacher for each grade level, six times twenty-five schools, and that's kind of, I thought, okay. And they might be a little blended if they only have three or four third graders and three or four fourth graders. That's not unreasonable to have a cross grade level class when you only have six or seven. And you have them five hours and you could do a skill base. Yeah, you can get these starting over here while you do vocabulary over here, while you do this over here when the classes are smaller.
You like those hard stops, John?
I do love the hard stops. But if it does, if all of this is based on skill-based assessment, we know what the content is, but. I mean, we're have.
I'm sure there'll be some alternate and substitute. If they, if they don't, there'll be some, TJ will provide some, there are some that would be optional. If they were to be a hot three, it's about one hundred and forty-five. But if not, if not, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we are, even the DEA doesn't have anything, because we have our own individual assessment.
I mean, we can, we can do something that's, again, sort of a skill base, we're using the ICIP or, you know, continuing with Imagine Math Four. We can absolutely have a, a stand, more standard space. So either way, we, we could create a backup plan.
Yeah, it just makes kind of the credibility of your statistical analysis when you don't compare apples to apples. But if there's no apple, there's no apples.
Well, like last spring, there was no apple. So all, everything we're basing on is two thousand and nineteen, so. But thank, thank you if there's any other questions.
If I understand the plan of action going forward, I think we have consensus on what this draft should be of our Lone Star goals for the next three years. Elena will work to disseminate that to the media. Will also, she'll also work to put that on our website and allow for input. Hopefully it'll be front, you know, be one of the first blurbs that pop up on the MISD website so people can be so informed. I hope that also as part of our publicity, we'll put links or make a reference to the videotape meeting today. So that they can go to our district board tab and go to the meeting and then see, they can see, you know, what we spent time discussing and more of the details and maybe apparent to them if they just were to look at, at this. In the meantime, you'll, you're working on the calendar with an, with the goal of having that go through the process for teacher input and so forth, but hopefully have it for us to consider and vote on hopefully at the January meeting, correct? Okay.
And can I suggest one other thing? I know the teachers get a weekly or some kind of, where y'all reach out to them and give them the news. We need to put this in the teacher later also.
Thank y'all, it's work.
Yeah. Yeah, that was very helpful, thank y'all.
The only other thing I'd add to your place is the guide superintendent search calendar. So you have one between the pocket. According to Veronica, she had pulled the board and it could reserve the eight to the end to six. Our extended deadline has given a big boost over the holidays. We, I know over fifty requests for applications now, I've talked to twenty-two as of today. So I think by Friday we'll have the applications.
Good.
So plan to be worker bees on the eighteen?
All right, thank y'all. We are adjourned at one oh five PM.